Okay, it's seven o'clock. Meeting is called by order on the 10th and 10th, twenty twenty-five, at seven AM.
Cox?
Yes.
Farley?
Here.
Beverly?
Yeah.
Clerk is here.
Okay, number three, discuss and take action on consent agenda and all items under consent agenda will be heard consecutively unless opposition is presented, in which case the contested items will be considered discussed as appropriate action taken separately. Eight minutes from May tenth, at seven fifty-five, meeting, I make the motion with approval.
I think.
Yes.
B, pay bills, BSO on all accounts, RWD, all accounts, and Waste Connection, and ONG, and etc. Okay, number four, discuss and take action. The board of trustees will revisit the contracts submitted by Waste Connection.
My name is Bailey Barber, I'm the attorney for Town of Bradley. Um, we have decided that the contrast between Waste Management and um, the Town of Bradley, PWA, is unenforceable because there is no PWA. Um, the PWA is a public trust and pursuant to sixty OS, four ninety-four, public trust must be audited either once a year or twice a year, and it has no audits, no audits have been made. And therefore, a PWA does not exist, therefore, it's unenforceable. Even if it did exist, it would be void and unenforceable because it's in violation of the Oklahoma Constitution. Does anyone have any question?
I do. Earl, no, I'm in group talk. Uh, I know that it's up to the board, but I think us people can do the shit I say, if we change or not, because the T, the trash people have done a good job, and I've been here ever since they started, and they've done a good job. Now, right at first, sometimes they might forget people, or when they change hands, but right now, they're doing a good job. And so, am I out of order? Okay. I don't mind change if they wasn't doing a good job, and the contract's about the same, but anything else, they know where the, where to go in the help, the route, and I don't know how anybody else feel. Uh, nobody's committed, I'm the only one that ever comes, commits.
I have no problem with them.
I don't either, and I don't see them saying, I don't see no mist during the talk, when they're not doing anything wrong.
I've been paying for trash for several years and it hasn't been picked up.
Well, maybe that's your fault, maybe, no, 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 that's not that.
No, we can't argue during meeting.
I'm not, I'm not, when ours didn't pick up, we called Natalie, and she sought to call the people that are in charge of the trash, and did that, no, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, saying. Frankie has problems. We have called Natalie, and she saw that those people would come the next day and pick it up. And you got to have that trash out there on the edge of the road. Or they won't pick it up, they won't come your driveway and do it, but in their business.
Can I speak?
Yes.
My address was taken off of their roof, it was taken off of their map without me knowing about it. That's why my trash has not been picked up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Of course, the standard is, is exactly what you're talking about.
Yes.
We receive a phone call, um, I personally look into each, each, each call that comes in, um, as, as a site manager, and our ops manager sees to the drivers, and so it's, I get to be a middleman, right, to see both sides, and that's exactly the standard. A call comes in, issue arises, uh, I, I hand it off to the ops manager, say, hey, here's the deal, how can we get this picked up? They'll say, okay, we're gonna get back by today, tomorrow, whatever.
And so, we wait to get her name back on it.
Yeah, I don't, all for it, we just need to talk, I mean, it's, you know.
And help her out.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Because her trash needs to be, if she's paying for it, her trash needs to be.
For over ten years.
I agree with you.
That's just a conversation.
My address, I don't know how it was taken off.
Who knows?
I didn't, I didn't take it up.
Who knows?
But I've been paying trash on a water bill for ten years, and my trash has not been picked up.
Well.
Yeah, it's a simple conversation, we can fix that tomorrow.
This is one reason not running out.
I didn't know who to contact, I don't, I don't have conversations with Natalie at all, because she's, I can't.
Go a different way, and sit with different people, why?
And at the end of the day, that's, that's gonna be, all I have to say is, is we pride ourselves on, on good service. I, I live around here, I plan on working here a long time, I'm not going anywhere, I've been here about three years, and um, I'm, I'm not shy to give my phone number out to whoever needs it, and uh, our pricing is competitive, I was figuring out numbers before this, and um, especially, you know, we, we throw in our three roll-offs, uh, free a year, which is, I mean, that's eighteen hundred dollars to, to the normal person, right, of credit, so, um, for, for bulk items, or whatever you want to use it for, but at the end of the day, um, that's all I had, because she, she spoke for me. Um, was, was, hey, if you, if you want to leave a good service, then that's just, that's, that's all you, I mean, that's all I have to say.
My deal was never with the service. My deal, my deal never was with their service, um, you know, it was, it was about the price hike, the ten dollar jump.
Well, theirs was higher too, but yeah.
Well, they came in with a ten dollar jump on this.
I still say.
And if we'd, and if we'd signed that contract, y'all been paying ten dollars a month on everything.
Do what?
Y'all always pay ten more dollars a month.
I mean, at the end of the day, we've got, we've got the new, new price right, right there.
But the problem was, y'all didn't come back with a new price until we come back with another trash company to replace y'all then, y'all come back, say, oh, no, no, let's come down and try to match our prices, but before that, y'all weren't doing that, y'all was bogharding, sending like twenty-seven dollars a policy card.
And, and that was just simply, there was, it was simply, what do we do with a billing change like this, let's copy it. That's all it was, and then, and then you said, it's too high, okay, that's fine.
Well, I mean, we understand a little bit of increase, but that was, that was a big increase.
I understand, I understand that, I mean, that's, that's why we, Brittany and I had that conversation, when we, we heard, we heard, hey, it's, it's, they're saying it's too high, okay, let's have a conversation, I mean, it's, it's simple as that.
So, you've lowered your price?
Yeah, we're at twenty, instead of whatever was twenty-seven, or whatever was proposed, you know.
Twenty-seven and some change.
Yeah, yeah.
Just the proposed, and it came back.
So now, we're down to twenty, versus nineteen.
We just don't know if the other one's gonna be as reliable, I mean, these guys, I have a dumpster, and they dump it one, once a week, really, they dump, every time someone driving by, they dump it, because they're out going across town, we're not doing it, they're coming out and helping.
They must be getting y'all money, they are.
Like I said, call them.
Vote on this?
I say so.
You've gotta call them.
Okay, I make the motion, we vote on this.
I'm saying that motion will not.
Yes.
I'm gonna be frank, I'm voting on this.
I motion to vote.
I don't know what they're talking about.
Do you need the contract, or to fill out the contract?
Are you not wanting to vote, or you want to vote, but you don't wanna vote, but you want to abstain from the vote?
My vote is to change the crash. My deal is, I can look at everybody out there, and when they, and they pay Jack price up again, everybody's gonna come right to us and say, why don't y'all do something about that, why don't you do that?
I don't think you priced the prices, have you?
Right, twenty dollars, which is, which is a lot, but, there's always pricing policies built in, I mean, that's just.
It's so signed to veterans.
Yeah, so, so veterans is at nineteen ninety-five a car, or twenty, um, there's also, they're, they're, they're a little cheaper on, on the containers, well, two yards, right? We all, we, on, in town, we give four percent kickback to the town, right, and we're gonna offer three free roll-offs a year, um, which, which is big. For town cleanups, or whatever you want.
Can I ask a question? Well, were you talking about they won't, the rest of the people that have a contract with them?
Uh, well, there was technically never a PWA, so they can't just auto-renew it, because it's not an enforceable contract.
So we would essentially have to just propose a new contract?
Yes.
And they have to do it a year by year, right? Every year, we have to renew.
I've heard bad things about you.
And each year, you have to break the contract for renewal, so that we're not violating the Oklahoma Constitution by entering into an indebtedness.
Makes sense.
Okay.
And that's why the people would even, if there wasn't.
Sure, yeah.
I don't know what they're doing.
Waiting for Ms. Farley, Mrs. Farley to make a decision.
Mrs. Farley's working it out in her head here, trying to.
You can take your time. Can I ask, why, why is it up to, I've never agreed with this, from way back, why is it up to the board to change something we've had, why can't the committee?
Because we're the ones that make a decision for the town.
I don't agree with that, I, I've never agreed.
You got to have a governing board.
What?
You guys are what?
I can't hear. Re-elected them, yes, we did. I know that, that's my husband. I still think it's like a baby, he don't know what I'm supposed to, I was gonna talk, right, I had never discussed it with him. I still think the town is the ones that are paying the bills, why can't we have a vote? Okay, well, we'd be, well, they'd be, will y'all be sending a bill to us directly?
Yes, that's how this all started, is that Waste Management was asked to do direct billing.
Yeah. Get it away from the market. So you guys wouldn't have it, like, you, no, I just don't agree with, never have, long time ago, but, that's me. Did you? Well, something's I didn't, I mean, did I?
I got a question for both of you.
Okay.
Yours, I, I'm straight up know the answer, right off the top of my head. If somebody's delinquent on the bill, do y'all go after the person?
And it would, it takes a little while for us to, I, I think we usually end up waiting about two months before we take any action on it, so far, it's picking up the cart or anything.
Because that's one of the problems that the town was running into, is people aren't paying their trash bill through the water department, but the town was still having to foot the whole bill. So essentially, the town was paying for the whole waste bill, but somebody was getting free, free trash.
And at that point, it would be up to the town just to go pick up the cart, typically, that's how that would work, but, um, since you guys don't have a PWA.
Yeah, we don't have a PWA, so we can't. Have to be up to Waste or Veterans to do.
They can pick them up.
Yeah, yeah, we have to.
You know, we.
And I always say, on the, on the service concerns, I've got thirty-three towns, and I've never lost a town, um, we've renewed every one of our contracts.
On your contract, I read in there that if somebody didn't pay the bill, that y'all wanted us to pay the town board, or the town, to try to help collect that.
Um, I mean.
That's what our range is.
Just, as in, like, send a letter or something, but we, we usually take care of all of our collections.
Well, that's in your contract.
Okay, I can have it taken out.
And if you were doing the direct billing, then we would have nothing to do with it.
Right, right, we can take that out.
These guys are about here now.
Sorry, are you, yeah.
I'd like to use, you guys are the board, tell me what you wanna do.
I'll change my, I'll vote, I guess, vote.
Make a motion to rescind.
We don't know what to say, yes, or.
I make a motion to do a vote on, on this.
Your fight, lights out.
I did.
Okay.
So we'll get you guys a, a new contract.
And it'll be renewable every July first, correct? Okay, and we'll be taking over the direct, correct?
Yep, doing all the same stuff, we proposed. Yep.
Okay, number five, discuss and take action on, for, for getting a cash check for home people to break the purchase. The approved by our marshal inspector, for a total of four hundred seventy-three fifty. What I would like to do on this, is have her, maybe go to law, see what we can get, and see if maybe we can, uh, get a, a count set up with them. So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to have her live for the moment, if she can go with, and check the prices out, and make still go with them. Let that her check the prices out, and see if she can give us an account. And that way.
I can't hear them, between the background noise and the boiler motor, I can't hear what they're saying up there.
Guys, excuse me, y'all. Sorry, please, um, you made a motion, Earl, anybody second it?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Number six, discuss and take action on mutual agreement between Town, Bradley, and Rural Water for use in town barn for storage of supplies.
And that would be a storage in the town barn for their, like, water lines, pipe, things like that, off to that one section.
Yeah, so the motion.
What y'all explaining, Earl?
I think it is.
So, in your motion, you would say, what's gonna be stored, what part of the barn is gonna be stored in more specifics, so that there's no.
Yeah, well, you, well, she answered, Dad, one second, but we're gonna have to get some stuff moved around.
Right, but it would be at that, the wall that backs up to the office, the clerk's office.
Definitely not.
That's where that would go.
I make a motion, vote on that?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Yes, got something else to say about that. I'm sorry, Rachel.
I know, I can't hear them when you interrupt, you gotta wait until I get the votes written down, please. Okay, um.
She was through.
Storage of the water lines, meters, um, I don't know what all they use.
It'd be fitting parts and tools.
Fitting parts and tools.
I'm gonna go by.
Earl, do you wanna make a motion?
Where, where are your voters on that?
I couldn't hear.
Oh, okay, I make a motion.
I'm thinking.
Then we go on that.
Make a motion to what?
To approve letting the Rural Water Department use part of the barn for storage of water lines, meters, fittings, pipes, and tools, she said I had to make it very specific, so that's what I was doing, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven, discuss and take action on mutual agreement between Town, Bradley, and Rural Water for the use of the backup.
And that would be, like, when they came before, when they made the motion back then, or when the Frankie and Natalie and Donna brought it to the board and asked, and that they would be responsible for the fuel, the maintenance, and the repairs, when they use it.
They said they'd wash it.
But.
And they would either wash it, keep it taken care of.
Yes.
What about the insurance, though, are they gonna have insurance that's gonna cover part of that?
That's what Philip said, the ORWA would cover, that insurance should cover that.
Okay, we still got a old leak we need to get fixed on it.
Okay, so.
I make a motion, we vote on this.
I'm thinking.
Yes.
So is that a?
Yeah, that's a yes.
You're a yes for you, a yes for Zana, and a second and a yes for Deanie.
Okay, number eight, discuss and take action on mutual agreement between Town, Bradley, and Rural Water to use the town barn lobby for billing, secretary needs on Mondays and Tuesdays, for a rental of a fee of thirty dollars to cover the electric and wifi.
Clarify something, I made a mistake when I wrote that, and I put the barn lobby for billing, that would be for, that is part of the use, but those days would be different than Monday and Tuesday, because my hours for the town are four thirty to six on Mondays and Tuesdays, so I would be up there at a different times to do billing. The four thirty to six would be for the secretary to come in and do her computer work, whatever that may be.
Other question I've got on, is this gonna be a permanent deal, or is it gonna be just temporary?
The mutual agreements would last for five years, and it's between the town board and the Rural Water Department, it doesn't matter who's clerk, who's billing, who's on which board, it doesn't pertain to any of that, it is a cooperative agreement between the Town of Bradley and the Rural Water District, because without Rural Water, we don't have a Town of Bradley.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'm thinking.
Yes.
And then we go ahead. And then we go with that. Here, buddy.
Yes, sir.
All right, number nine, immediate comment. Anyone have an item for business to present, or board of trustees request to sign in a prior meeting, and will be required to limit their presentation for three minutes. Additionally, if there are no more than one individual who would like to speak at the same topic, board of trustees may request its spoken person to be on behalf of the group. Ensure their compliance with Oklahoma Meeting Act. No action will be taken on information received from the citizens from the meeting, or there'll be any of the feedback from the board of trustees.
I would just like to say, the water board appreciates y'all doing that for us, to help us keep the water system going, you know, to have a place to store the stuff.
Anybody else got any comments?
Can we still send in our water bill? We could still send it in by mail, right, ma'am?
That's changed.
Well, I don't want to go up to the building and...
No, no.
No, ma'am. I'm there to log in your payments, run the bills, things like that. Nothing changes on what you've been doing all these years, ma'am.
Another question. Is there a letter gonna be sent out that they can come at your time that you said?
And, well, it's, no, the bookkeeper will not be there. She will be doing town stuff those days.
Those days, I'm separate. I will come on another day. And I will figure out what hours I can be there on what day to do the billing, which is generally towards the end of the month. So, it'll be, but bills can come there. And of course, everybody knows where I live. I'm fine with people, you know, getting ahold of me and saying, hey, Rach, I'm sorry, I had to work a double. I had to work late, or, you know, whatever the case may be. Could I meet you at the town building and give you my payment? If I'm not busy doing something, like, out of town, I'd be more than happy to run down. It'd take me two minutes to take the payment, secure it in the office, well, though...
And if you can't get a hold of Rach, or you can always get a hold of me and bring it to me.
Anyone else?
I got another question. I'm sorry. When is, when is the trash people gonna start sending out their own bills?
It won't be till after July.
July first, we'll...
Okay, another thing. Is there gonna be a letter to send out all these people that don't come to the meeting, so they'll know what's going on?
We can do that. I mean, the water...
I think that's what you should, can't we? Because they won't know what to do.
Right.
Well, obviously, they would have to be notified somehow, yes, ma'am.
You take your life, Rachel, and they don't know.
I will definitely do that.
Frankie, you're gonna type that up?
I, well, we're listening.
See that now?
All right, then, here's a question.
Well, wait, should the water bill, the water department just do billing?
Yeah.
It's the town that's going to the, to the direct billing, so shouldn't that letter come from the town?
Yes, yes.
That's what I was saying.
Since we're the ones giving up, paying for it, having them collect the money, and then we send in the bill, isn't it our responsibility, since the spoke is the boards, the town boards, for us to send out said letter?
So I don't have to have it? Thank you, Rachel.
Just don't want to blur lines at all. I want everything. I don't remember talking to y'all, or, y'all were not there, because it's...
Anything else? All right, number ten, the tariffs. I make a motion with...